Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, November 2, 2020. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record show that all the city councilors are present, including City Administrator Canrath. With that, I'd like to ask all the public and members on to join the City Council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please direct your attention to the flag behind City Administrator Canrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. With that, we have a couple of things under general tonight. We have the Item A, Extra Mile Day proclamation. City of Saco Office of the Mayor, 2020 Extra Mile Day. Whereas Saco is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Saco is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Saco is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its communities who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Saco acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 500 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2020. Now therefore, I, William Doyle, Mayor of Saco, Maine, do hereby proclaim that November 1, 2020 was Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time, not only to go the extra mile, I urge each in his or her own life, but also acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Signed this day of November 2020, Mayor of City of Saco. With that Extra Mile, we have some very special folks that we would like to recognize as part of the Extra Mile Award tonight, and that is the recognition of Extra Mile Award winners, Don Roth, Donna Bevridge, and Chris Rizziakis. Donna Bevridge, volunteer with Saco's senior programs. Donna is an outstanding volunteer who goes above and beyond in serving the residents of Saco. She organized and now runs our Handy Helper program, which has provided many residents with needed home repairs or modifications. Donna also recently helped organize our Tech Handy Helper program, enabling us to give out tablets to low-income seniors and help them bridge the digital divide. She is a tireless in her efforts to find solutions for our residents and always shares a smile and a helping hand. Donna is a priceless member of our community and is deserving of the Extra Mile Award. Don Roth, Facilities Manager for the City of Saco. Don Roth and his staff take care of numerous buildings within the city. When COVID-19 started, Don immediately got to work securing supplies and creating new procedures for sanitizing the city's properties. When it was time to reopen City Hall, Don found creative ways to keep both members of the public and city staff safe while conducting business. Don goes above and beyond to help and is constantly offering solutions to issues that arise. Don is a valued member of the city staff and so deserving of the Extra Mile Award. Thank you, Don. And the third is Chris Rizziakis, owner of the Golden Rooster Restaurant. Chris purchased the Golden Rooster with members of his family right after he graduated from high school in 1985. Since then, Chris has been a constant presence on Main Street. Chris is a loyal supporter of Saco Main Street and their events, working to enhance the vitality of Saco's downtown. During COVID-19, Chris participated in the Meals for Seniors program, which supplied 3,000 meals to 460 residents. Chris and the Golden Rooster did not let COVID slow them down. They increased their outdoor seating on Main Street, offering a safe and friendly environment for people to gather for food. Chris is a cherished member of the Saco community and so deserving of the Extra Mile Award. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Don, and thank you, Donna, for your going the extra mile for the City of Saco and our community as a whole. With that, we are to Item C. Just a reminder, folks, just a reminder, on Election Day tomorrow, Tuesday, November 3, all voting will occur at Thornton Academy's Lynnell Gymnasium at 438 Main Street. Please take notice of this change in location from previous elections. The polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic and staff limitations, voters will be separated alphabetically rather than by ward once they are in the single polling place again, Thornton Academy's Gymnasium. With that, we are to Item 5 of the agenda, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondence at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence at this time, we are now at Item 6 of the agenda, Public Comments. City Administrator Canrath, have you received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, would like to invite anyone who is on the Zoom meeting or participating that would like to speak to the council. Please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be called upon to speak to the council, or *9 if you're calling in from a cellular phone. Again, anyone that would like to address the council, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and nobody seeking recognition, public comment. Moving on to Item 7, there are no minutes to approve. There is no consent agenda item, so that leaves us to Item 9, Action Items. We have two items on tonight's agenda. Item A, One Reading, Police Department COVID MOU. This was put forth under New Business last meeting and has been put in for Item A for tonight. Again, this is as a result of the main chiefs of police for this region getting together and working together to deal with issues related to COVID-19. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Multiple York County law enforcement agencies have entered into a mutual aid agreement as a precaution in the event that a department is impacted by an emergency such as COVID-19. The attached MOU would allow for other police departments to assist anywhere in York County if requested. Staff recommends approval and be it ordered that the City Council authorize this Chief Clemens and Chief Administrator, City Administrator Canrath, to enter into a county-wide extended police authority agreement for mutual aid assistance. I move to approve the order.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion or a roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Up next, we have Item B, a First Reading Amendment to Chapter 64, Animals, Subsection 2, Subsection 64-8, Running at Large. That is on page 10 of the packet for anyone who is following along, and that is Counselor Arch.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The current Code of Ordinance relating to dogs states that the animal must be on a leash or under voice control while in public. The proposed amendment requires the voice control portion of the ordinance requiring dogs to be leashed. The City Council hereby approves the first reading of the proposed amended Chapter 64, Animals, 2, Subsection 64-8, Running at Large, and further removes this, further moves to schedule a public hearing date of November 16, 2020.
Motion's been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Menthorn. Any discussion? Counselor Copeland?
I am against this with simple reason that we do have the ordinance, and the reason that this is being up is because of a specific event, a horrifying event. But I don't think that changing our ordinance is going to change anything. That ordinance says that the dogs need to be under voice control. They were not, so they were outside of the ordinance. So I don't see that changing the ordinance is going to change anything here, I'm sorry to say. So I'll be noting this down.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposed revision, relatively clean language about having the dogs on leashes at all times and in public, the context of that, I have no issue with. What I have issue with is the second paragraph, which has been remained unaltered, has excessive use of the word "should" in terms of what our ordinance should be as related to dogs on the beach. Now, if the revision passes, it would essentially ban dogs not on a leash in public throughout the city, regardless of whether on a beach or on a road. And I think the purpose of the second paragraph was just to sort of reiterate that. But at the same time, the language as it exists, using the word "should" is not really an effect in ordinance though, because it doesn't enforce any ordinance aside from saying, you know, if something happens, there should be a ban. Well, that's like saying we should, you know, ban jaywalking. That's not an ordinance. Either the dogs are banned from being loose or they're not though. So I suppose I would like to have an amendment or propose an amendment to this proposal that the language is cleaned up a little bit in that second paragraph, and we replaced the "shoulds" with "shall," so it actually is a legally enforceable ordinance.
Counselor Gunn has put forth an amendment to replace the "should" with "shall" in Section B of Subsection 64-8, Running at Large. That would be Section B, the following restrictions apply to dogs on beaches, which was previously amended in 9/4 of 2018 as part of a beach management plan. So with that, the amendment has been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Discussion on the amendment, on the amendment only discussion.
Well.
Counselor Johnston?
This is the first reading, correct?
Correct.
I mean, traditionally, we haven't made amendments on the first reading, but I would just say, on that amendment, from what I recall, that "should" was added back in 2018 as kind of a compromise at the time, and I would agree, it's kind of ambiguous, but that was actually intent, from what I recall. As far as amending it, I would think that if you do go forward with amending the language in the first paragraph, it probably should be amended in that lower paragraph, given that we would be requiring leashing everywhere, so it would make sense. Not that I'm really agreeable to that, but I think that Counselor, his motion makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Archer?
That, the hands up for not related to the amendment?
The main motion?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Copeland on the amendment?
I would just say, if you're going to change that, I would not change it to "shall." I would simply say, let's see, where is it? Dogs are prohibited. "Shall" is a very, very strict legal intent, and I think just saying that they are prohibited is good for an ordinance, my opinion.
Thank you, Counselor Copeland. Just so the council is clear, and I'll ask Counselor Gunn if I'm understanding his motion correctly, or his amendment, rather. All dogs, instead of "should be leashed" or "under voice control," it should be "shall be leashed and under control of their owners at all times from April 1 through September 30 on beaches where piping clovers or at least turns are present or have traditionally nested, dogs shall be prohibited on these beaches from April 1 through September 30 if based on the observations and experience dog owners fail to keep pets leashed and under control. So it's replacing both "shoulds" with "shall's." Counselor Gunn, am I correct in your amendment? You are on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are correct, and in the second sentence of that, though, which basically, again, was a little vague when I approached it, reading it, and said that, you know, they would be banned if conditions were met. By putting the two "shall's" in there, basically, it establishes that, yes, the dogs can't be unleashed. However, by keeping the second sentence in there of the second paragraph, it basically allows us to, whether on a quarterly basis or on a seasonal basis, et cetera, revisit the ordinance based on public behavior, the presence of the piping clovers, et cetera. So basically, what we're saying is, yes, you know, dogs have to be on a leash through a certain period of time though, but a certain period of time, perhaps during the wintertime, they don't necessarily have to be so long as there's good behavior, and we reserve the right to basically, as a council, I would say enact temporary ordinances based on, you know, people's behavior. So if people are not behaving with their dogs, or the dogs, I really should say, are not behaving, then we would say, as the council, okay, for the next 90 days, you can't have a dog unleashed on the beach though. I guess my point was that establishes a firm precedent that dogs have to be leashed, but at the same time, since if you take your dog on the beach in the wintertime and there's not a lot of people around, obviously, I don't want to have an ordinance so strict though that people are just going to flaunt it, especially if there's a common sense approach to it though. So that was my intent.
Thank you, Counselor Gunn. So the amendment is to change both "shoulds" to "shall's" in Section B, Subsection 1. That is the amendment that was put forth by Counselor Gunn, second by Counselor Archer. Any discussion, any further discussion on the amendment only? On the amendment? Seeing no further discussion on the amendment, Counselor Copeland?
Well, I think Joe's intent is fantastic, and we should allow for some flexibility if there's nobody else or whatever, but the word "shall" takes that out. The word "shall" says, you will. You will remove the dog or whatever. So that's why I was just saying "are," but that's... Okay, I said my piece.
Any further discussion on the amendment only? Okay, on the amendment, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
No.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
The motion passes, the amendment passes 5-2. All right, back to the main motion. Counselor Archer, you had your hand up?
Yes.
On the main motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just something to contribute for potential amendment later, possibly have staff look into this and create a fairness perspective to it, is that I'd also like to add a clause for violations with a warning in there for first offense, because fairness, things like that, and then increasing fines for subsequent violations. I would also support that these funds be specifically put into a dog fund, dog park fund, where the funds are used for the future development or renovations of current dog parks, animal parks, whatever the wording is. But I'd like to see maybe staff draft something up with the fines, punitive but not punished, like not punishable by any means, something that's considered fair within some of our other ordinances, maybe using the same dollar figures and things to that nature. And then possibly the dog park fund, which if that was to be created, something, some feedback from possibly Parks and Rec or Finance.
Thank you, Counselor Archer. Counselor Johnston, then Counselor Menthorn. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So when we last spoke on this, I guess back in September, I believe, I previously requested statistics on dog attacks for Saco and overall state of Maine, and examples of surrounding communities' ordinances. So, you know, it's a bit concerning to me that, you know, once again, we have not been provided with much detailed documentation for an item before us. But I kind of, you know, it's similar to Counselor Copeland's comments earlier, I kind of view this as a blanket punishment, where you have a single incident which was horrific, yet we're now going to amend the entire ordinance, given that one event. And again, without the statistics, I have no real understanding if dog attacks, you know, occur often in Saco. I'm, you know, totally in the dark in that area. But I do know of several downtown dogs that are, you know, obedient, off-leash. They respond to commands, I've seen it. Certainly not my dog, but, and it's why I keep my dog leashed, but I do know several that have had proper training, you know, that the owner says heel, they stop. They say come, they come, period. Doesn't matter for squirrels running or whatnot. So I do kind of have a problem where we're trying to legislate to everybody, given one single event. I think a better approach to this is to try to better define and develop this ordinance as I've seen other communities do. I mean, I would agree that our ordinance is pretty vague here when we speak to voice command. There's no definition of what that really means. So again, that would be my approach, and I guess I'll submit some ideas as we move this forward for how to better clarify this. And I would also agree with Counselor Archer, I think several other communities do such fee structure that way in regards to fines for this, because again, right now, it's just, you know, it was probably written 30 or 40 years ago, and it's extremely vague, and I think we need to clean up the language, but I don't agree with just, you know, trying to penalize all dog owners, given this one dog owner that obviously didn't have control of their dogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, thank you. Backing off what Nathan said, I had submitted three or four different model ordinances from the American Kennel Club and some other veterinary groups and whatever for staff consideration, and it suggested, when we visited this last time, that we go through the entire ordinance and hit the refresh button, and, you know, if we're going to touch one part, we should touch the whole thing and bring it up to best practices and current practices based on the national experts. And, you know, here we are deleting, you know, a dozen words again, and the intent, I thought, when we came out of this last time, was that we were going to revisit the entire ordinance and bring it up the way it should have been, to national best practice. So I, like Counselor Johnston, I'm rather disappointed that this is what we got when that wasn't what we had asked for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Any further discussion on the main motion? Just remind everyone, this is a first reading. If you have other further amendments or would like other things put in, please submit that to City Administrator Canrath, so he can put in the proper staff to respond to this and prepare the documentation for the next meeting, the public hearing, which is tentatively scheduled for the 16th, should you pass the first reading. So with that, any further discussion on the main motion as amended? On the main, Counselor Menthorn?
I'd like to table this and send it back to staff. I don't think we should be sitting here band-aiding one sentence when we've asked staff to revisit the entire ordinance and bring it up to practices, and I've submitted things already, I'm sure others could as well. I don't see why we should go forward with something when we really should be, you know, bringing it with the full refresh back to council at that point, then have a public hearing on the full document and a fresh ordinance, and if we implement Counselor Archer's fine structure and other things in here, you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. Why band-aid it and then have 99% of it still, as Counselor Johnston pointed out, an old
Counselor Menthorn has made a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. No discussion, roll call vote on a motion to table. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes to table, 7-0. Staff will work on this and bring something to us at a subsequent meeting down the road.
Skip Counselor Menthorn.
With that, we are... Counselor McPhail, did you have something?
We skipped Counselor Menthorn's vote.
There's a pattern developing here.
Counselor Menthorn? My apologies.
No problem, yes.
Since you made the motion, motion passes 7-0. Moving on to Item 10, New Business. There are no new business items. Item 11, City Administrator Canrath, do you have an update for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, a couple of quick updates for you to follow on property transfers. We have now closed, we had the close with the Habitat for Humanity property to Marguerite Road, as well as the parcel we sold to Mel Leiberg, who was the neighbor, that occurred on October 28. As was decided by the council, the proceeds from the Leiberg sale are being donated back to Habitat for Humanity. Also, the closing for our Foreign Public Works facility at 351 North Street is now scheduled for November 18. Another update on elections, as everyone knows, City Hall auditorium voting has now concluded. We had a huge turnout here, so thank you to everyone for coming out and voting early here at City Hall, if you could do that. As was stated previously, all voting tomorrow will be at Thornton Academy, and you may also still use our ballot drop box that's located on the side of City Hall, the Cuts Avenue side, through tomorrow, but all ballots must be deposited there in the box by 8:00 PM tomorrow, which is the closing of the polls. So 8:00 PM tomorrow for the ballot drop box on Cuts Avenue. An update on our absentee ballot numbers for this year, we had 10,010 ballots issued. We've received back and have accepted 9,352 ballots. How that compares to our last presidential election year of 2016, we had 5,131 issued, and we had 5,031 returned and accepted. In that year, we had an overall voter turnout of about 71%, so we'll see how this year fares. Just a reminder also, our Senior Meals Program, our Parks and Rec Department, is starting back up. We have November 11, Veterans Day, a meal on that day provided by Golden Rooster, and the second one will be November 19. So please get in touch with Parks and Rec if you'd like to participate, or if anyone would like to volunteer, please contact Amelia Meyer at Parks and Rec. This past week, Tony Scabuzzo and BS OOB held an open house for their new coach that has arrived. Now, this will be running the Zoom route to Portland. It is their first new vehicle in quite a while, so I was able to stop by and take a look at that, and this is the first of several in the future new vehicles they're going to be acquiring. So positive trends at BS OOB, and just want to commend the work they're doing, that Tony is doing to continuing to improve our public transit here in Saco. So I am happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Canrath. Any council questions? Thank you, City Administrator Keanrath, any council questions? Seeing no council questions, moving on to council discussion and comment. Any counselors, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Just going back to the dog ordinance, I'd just like to suggest that perhaps we, when we bring that item back, we do it as new business with the documentation, so that we can actually then give staff some kind of direction, because otherwise, I don't really know how staff would, would put forward an item that, you know, we haven't really given our blessing to.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further council discussion and comment? See no further discussion and comment, moving on to item thirteen, executive session, is there a motion to enter executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRS A Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Subchapter One, Section four oh five six E, pending legal matter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn, I'm sorry, was that a yes?
That's a yes.
Thank you. Counselor Copeland?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion enter executive session, passes seven, zero at seven oh two P M. Again, counselors, please go ahead and migrate over to the Zoom invite that was sent to you by City Administrator Keanrath.
I believe everybody is back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved. City Council.
Is there a second?
Okay, we're doing it that way.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Menthorne, second by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion? Roll call vote to come out of executive session. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session passes seven zero at eight forty four P. M. Councilor Menthorne, is there a report from executive session?
Yes, there is, Mr. Mayor. The city council authorizes the city administrator to sign a release and legal settlement agreement between the city and Lewis Waterhouse to dismiss his appeal to the planning board and cover his legal fees for a payment of twenty five thousand dollars, provided the release agreement does not reference any memorandum of understanding.
Motion's been made by Councilor Menthorne. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes six one. We are moving on to item fifteen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Third.
Councilor Menthorne, motions. Councilor Copeland seconds. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Menthorne?
Yes.
Councilor McFail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn at eight forty six P. M. Thank you, everyone, for all your good work. Be well, stay safe, and remember tomorrow's election day, and please go vote, and please wear a mask. Thank you very much. Take care.
Good advice, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.